Sal and I talked about conceptualizing this. We think it makes the most sense to do it very quickly. So we're going to give you the peeps of the mountains because this is going to be an ongoing conversation, probably for two years. So if you feel that I'm going too quickly or Sal's going too quickly, please just let us know. We'd be more than happy to shift around. Ed and Joe and Sal and I met with the Commissioner and his team at the other Alliance Districts on Monday. We were able to get sort of a replay copy of the PowerPoint that the Commissioner used and modified slightly during this evening. So again, I'm going to go very gradually. Don't go too quickly, just slow me down. The districts must submit a five-year plan. If you're really looking at this thing as a holistic approach, but there's going to be great specificity and a substantial amount of accountability in the first year of the plan which is due this summer. And as years two through five go on, it's going to be kind of a rolling conversation in the State Department event. Again, I'm going too fast, it was just stopping. Thirty lowest performing districts based on District Performance Index. That's a new term, School Performance Index or SPI. You'll see shortly how that has changed. As a designation, we act it for five years. Good news is that we will need 1.7 million. We can count on that money in a specific way for the next five-year cycle. Here in the timeline, very, very aggressive, our meeting was the second bullet June 11th, Monday. And then July 13th, preliminary application deadline. If anyone can apologize because it's just right out of the box. So we're going to be doing some very aggressive work in the short term, which is kind of nice because it makes it, it's our beat of the fire. We didn't wind up. Applications due on the 15th of August. And what they're trying to do at the State Department is by the end of this summer, just before September begins, they want to be able to tell all the districts. And it's smiling because we've been here and done that before. We're going to give our best shot this evening. Stay, I think, so we give it the best shot to see if they get approved. As I mentioned, it's going to be on a roll basis. There are different opportunities that we can opt into. We'll talk about those shortly. None of those three seem to be appropriate for us. Let me just briefly touch on the time collaboratively. This would require the district to commit to adding 300 hours of instruction a year. And in order to do that, they were smiling and they said that you'd have to work with your unions and see if you can get some flexibility and so on and so forth. 300 hours a year and additional funding and all that. So we just smiled. Family resource centers, we have two. One is at Moore Street and one is at Hill Ridge. And those are working fine. There's no desire at this point in time to add more because you need to recover an administrator for an FRC and you need classroom space, which we have two and a half. And the K-3 literacy intervention is really held aside for the lowest performing districts in Connecticut. And let me just mention this punctuated again. There's a list of the 30 school districts that the state worked out. And it goes from the lowest performing to the highest performing of those districts. We are within one percentage point in being the highest performing district. So the good news is we almost didn't make it into that group. The bad news is we almost didn't make it into that group. And Sonia is unidentified. They've lost all their money and they're laying people off. So for us, it's really good to skate right around the edge so we get the funding and we can continue our improvement efforts.
I got to interrupt you for a second because again, I'm confused. This is about the 1.7?
No.
Correct. Not necessarily about how we got our, what do you call it, from the state?
Identified?
Washington and all wave.
That's part of this. It's part of this.
Okay, all right. Right now, we're talking about what we have to do to get the 1.7.
And halfway through this presentation, we'll go to the way.
Okay.
So to tie.
Right together.
To tie right together. The first sentence there, the middle of that, where it says funding issues for new reform efforts or for extension of the existing reform efforts. It really punctuated that if you keep doing what you've been doing or keep getting what you've been getting. So we haven't closed the achievement gap and raised achievement for all kids. Why don't we give you money to continue doing what you've been doing that hasn't had the kind of success that you want? Danbury story, and you heard it at the Lighthouse Training, we've done exceptionally well at the K-10 level as measured by the CMT. Am I correct? I don't think their psychometrician could have been more complimentary the other night when he did our data. And that was an independent data study, wasn't us doing it. So we're looking for new reforms, but if there's a period of existing reform, such as full-day kindergarten, we can turn around and say, we already have one full day. We have all full day at the magnet school. We want to move over the next few years and expand that. And that's where the state would say, we can give you 1.7 for three years. Part of that could be used in the extracurriculars. 350,000 is going forward for this coming year. Also, the nice part is balances can't be carried forward from year to year, which is wonderful if we have a multi-year initiative that we just haven't closed on yet. And they're looking, and the best way, I've met with our instructional development team today, trying to get them to help them understand how this works. If you think of a piece of copper wire that's braided wires, you take the cover off and has those little wires inside, that's what they're looking for. Traditionally, co-mingling of funds is kind of a dirty term. In this case, they're saying, if we give you 1.7 and you take your Title I money, and you take your Title III bilingual money, and you take your Perkins grant money, and you take your accountability grant money, and you Jevil fund money, you blend them all together, can you create this new vision for closing the achievement gap? Or are you simply relying on us to give you 1.7 million and that's it? We don't believe that's going to be enough to allow a district to do what any of these districts need to do. We agree with that thinking. So this is a blended funding stream that we take away from that. Two major component parts, overall improvement strategy and budget, simply meaning, how do you raise the achievement for all students and close the gap? And the really nice thing about this, they've asked me to look at me for just a second. We've been doing this with our administrative team. This, this, and this. We raise achievement for all students, close all gaps, and we focus on the adults to do that. Administrative team, instructional team, et cetera. When the Commissioner put his piece out, it was totally aligned to the thinking of this district for the past three, 10 years. So we are very well positioned to be very successful with this. So how are you going to raise the achievement for all kids while closing a gap and also use your money with them? And how are you going to treat schools differently? And we've also gone to a differentiated school model because we have, as you know, Moore Street School, we put a lot of time and effort in there. And they've been unidentified and not one of our high-studying schools. And that instruction review process we've talked about, we're providing differentiated school interventions. They just wanted us to explain what it is that we're trying to do. They have a variety of options that they're using and they want us to start with, so what does it look like? Performance targets reflect the metrics, or you can use CMTs, developing reading assessments, so on and so forth, cap tests. What are the high-leverage strategies that you're going to use? And what is the timeline for implementing those? And then you can see, year one implementation description, very strong, really needs to be very substantive. And then how long is it going to take for this thing to take place? So if we use all the kindergarten, for example, we would be very specific. Year one, we implemented at those five schools. It would cost us a lot of money. These are the classrooms that we would use. Years for implementation. Our tentative plan is two additional years. And they don't mind if we're fuzzier on this because they recognize things change over time. And the plan to use Alliance District funding is that blended funding stream that we talked about before. This is a menu of options, as they're calling it. The K-3 literacy interventions are for those schools that are really, I apologize for using this term, I can't think of a better one. They're really failing. They have horrible performance rates, they have horrible graduation rates. So they're being taken over basically, and they will be forced to use this K-3 literacy intervention. We talked about additional learning time, but that again becomes problematic with a minimum of 300 hours. We're looking at this talent development strategy through our teacher evaluation plan, really ensuring that administrators have the observation skills necessary to actually do a quality observation. We're also looking at developing our new young teachers so that they develop mastery of pedagogy in an abbreviated timeframe. School year training for state evaluation model, we more than likely will not do that because that means we'll have to adopt the state model. And our developmental team looked at the Robert Marzano model as probably the best fit. And in September, we'll bring that to the board. So we built in $150,000 for training for our own model. Early childhood services, as we've mentioned, we have the holiday kindergarten here. We've built in $50,000 from Astarte as a supplemental support on that. Student support and wraparound services, we have many of those right now. We don't see that being a high leverage strategy for us. And other reforms, subject to approval, things such as a one-grade NATHLON at the high school for kids who need extra ELL support, SIUP coaches, as we've done the training. They will give you the matrix that has the 1.7 plus, so you can see how we've kind of parcel this out. That matrix is based on the thinking of the entire school system coming forward. We've been, this has been rolling for weeks and weeks and weeks now. Every time we meet with the administrative team, we say, this is where we are. Take it back, come to your faculty, come back to us and talk to us again. And so this is going to be a work in progress for a short period of time. We don't need to talk about this because again, this is reserved for a different population. The same thing as 300 hours. We've talked about developing our talent. Coach email, that's second bullet down, is the idea that not only we, we spent a significant amount of money through Title III bilingual grant, bringing in Cal, the Center for Applied Linguistics in California, they're the leading experts in the country on shelter instruction, observation protocol, or SIUP model. It simply is basically good teaching with a language acquisition objective attached to it. And there's a district in Connecticut that has done expensive work in this area and is failing. And they chalk it up to they never coached their teachers. They trained them, but never had job-related coaching. So using the Alliance money, we have two SIUP coaches at the high school and one at each of the two middle schools, we've done one SIUP training. The idea of constantly working to refine, we've gone through a very different process this spring, identifying talented educators. That aspirants program, we're continuing to talk about, going on our own. Many of our principals now have, were Danbury teachers, who have gone to our own. Their board currently is looking at continuing that endeavor with kind of, um, folks. Just seems to make a lot of sense that people who have committed to being in Danbury, you know, we'll give them a career path. This again is for the state eval model, where we'll be doing, we'll be doing very similar training on that job-invented professional development. All tied to our teacher evaluation plan, which we frame as being a reflective process. I do this well and I don't do this well yet. So for professional development, now I do that well. So what? So I'm better able to meet the needs of children in the classroom. So it becomes a recursive process. We already mentioned about the early childhood initiatives that we're doing. We have a lot of this already built into our Title I and non-Title I schools. Even we have breakfast programs, so on and so forth, certification. This gets into your point Shirley, that early childhood behind waiver. For the most part, Connecticut was very successful with this. A couple of things where we, in one way, we're concerned a little bit, one though really not concerned, this would be, replace annually yearly progress, or AYP, with a different type of metric, an annual measurable objective. That was the thing that more than anything else drove the country crazy. It said that kids are no longer snowflakes, they're not different. Kids are like widgets, we're going to manufacture them. And each year, we're going to get better in creating certain tolerances, and so we're going to have fewer and fewer kids falling behind. Kids just don't learn and grow that way. Adults don't learn and grow that way. The state is using a much more reasonable approach, saying that we just will look annually and we'll see if you guys are making progress. The sanctions, which were really pernicious, are gone. There'll be new accountability factors in here, which we don't hide, they're stringent, but let me touch on one, we'll see you come back in a minute. Under NCLB, if you were identified year one, kids and parents had the opportunity to opt out of that school and go to a different school. It's called choice, as you know. Not a problem. We have parents every year who ask for pervasive transfers, meaning, I work across the street from this school, which is across town, but when my child gets out at the end of the day, or she can come right over to where I work and that's the scare of a daycare problem. Parents ask for that all the time, not an issue. But under the second year, there was something called SES, which is Supplemental Educational Services or mandatory tutoring. What's wrong with that? That's a great idea. First of all, many of the organizations that were providing this, I know for obvious reasons the current city, which was, didn't show up, didn't start on time. They were supposed to bring our kids at least to the level where their school is and then higher. And there was no evidence of that whatsoever in terms of the entire tenure of that initiative. And it costs us a quarter of a million dollars a year of our money. We're required to take a skim off the top of Title I and give it to the supplemental educational vendors through vendor fare. And we got no demonstrable improvement, not only in Danbury, across the state. That's gone. We can now repurpose that money or turn it onto our schools and say, if you like, to offer after-school tutoring with one of your teachers here or a number of your teachers.
We are prohibited from losing our teachers.
Under NCLB, correct.
The last thing is Title I funding. There's more flexibility in that, but as we've looked at it, it doesn't seem like it's necessarily a good fit for Danbury because the folks who have been here for many years, certainly before my time, so I'm not taking credit for this at all, whoever started Title I way back, really did a nice job of positioning it at the elementary level. The sanctions never kicked in at the middle school level or the high school level, which really would have been a problem for us. And the new flexibility allows us to do things that we're pretty much doing already. So that's kind of a non-issue for us. I apologize, this is a little bit hard to read up there. It goes directly to Shirley's point. If you look on the left side of this table, NCLB. If you look on the right side, this is the new deal. A bigger challenge for us, the target originally was proficient. If you use your hand like this and go, a low basic, basic, proficient, goal, advanced. We used to have to get low basic, basic to proficient. Now, the new goal of the state is the goal, that is the goal level itself, which is much higher, much more stringent. To a person, when we talk to our administrative team, we never had a problem with this. We always wanted to shoot for being just beyond proficient. We just wanted to make sure the metrics were reasonable instead of this step-by-step-by-step AYP business. It looks a little bit confusing, that next line, target by 2014. What that meant was, under NCLB, and the silly way of saying is, by the year 2014, all kids will be average, which is, is not actually more, because how can you be average if it's the average of a whole bunch of things? It's everywhere, right in the middle. To the right, you see halfway to target by 2018. A target is 88 percent, kids reaching goal. They want the state to be halfway to that target by the year 2018. If you look at it again, that means that they're looking basically at a five-year cut. Math and reading, we're primarily in the areas that we focused on. To the right, math reading, writing, and science count. We again know how it's wrong with this, what happened with science and social studies. There were many districts that just basically abandoned teaching because it was all about reading and math. And reading and writing got short shrift, which now you're saying, okay, quality education is a quality education. For us, that's good because the learning tree always had that. If you remember, Dr. Ross Faly comes before us, talking about the elementary science program, the cognitive coaches that we put in. Where are we shaped with that? The next one's a little bit tricky. I'm going to ignore that for a minute because I have a graphic that makes it a little bit easier, talking about cognitive progress in all the levels. The high school graduation rates, very important to us. We do well with this. Right, school progress also measured by high school graduation rates and the four-year drop-off rate. And they're looking at a certain number, we'll see this, come back in a minute, for kids who graduate in four years and then for kids who graduate in five years. The last one, again, is a little bit tricky. Let me see if I can do a good job of explaining it. In order to report and have a count against you, under NCLB, you have to have a subgroup of at least 40 students. So if I have 40 English language learners in my school, and that those kids don't make the proficient level, that gets reported and a sanction kicks in. If I have 20 of those kids, it gets reported, but the sanction cannot be attached to them. To the right, and this is where our accountability grows, we're now accountable for kids. We see students amicizing this number, a number of students, 20 or above. So the accountability becomes more stringent. I mean, the strings are attached to this, but again, we feel okay with this because we've always shot toward 20 and not shot back. Actually, we've shot toward like five to 10 kids and not shot fully. So we don't see this as being them owners. That's what he was saying. However, some districts may, and we're hoping that they will. And if they do and they say, this is too stringent for us, we don't want to opt in, there's a pool of money that we can go after and say, we're willing to go the extra mile. This is what I was talking about before. They moved from AYP to this thing called School Performance Index or SPI credit. If you're at the lowest level, below basic, it's the worst level where you can be. And the state is saying, it's really worth nothing, give some money out there as quickly as you can. If you get to basic, they're using a perfectly a third of the credit. And that's not, I guess the easiest way to think about it is a dollar bill. So if you hit basic, you get 33 cents. If you hit proficient, which is the old standard, it should be 66 percent in my opinion, but 67 percent, I'm not sure how they did that. I guess they wouldn't be able to get to 100 percent. Okay, 67 percent proficient, that gives you more credit. And then if you get to goal, you get a credit of one. Simply meaning, they aggregate all this together and they give you a number. And they did this with Danbury. And our number came, that was the number I was talking about before, came up very well.
They're playing that number in lottery.
Yeah, Sal's going to play the number in the lottery. The lowest performing district in Connecticut out of the Alliance districts has an index of 35.8. That doesn't mean anything, it's just like a random number. 35.8 at the top of the list up here. The Danberrys all the way down here, and it's like golf, or is it better? Our index is 61.5. Let me see how much higher we are. So we're doing, and the highest index is 62.5. So we're at 61.5, the highest is 62.5, and the lowest is 35.8, 40.7, 42.1, 43.3. We've done very well with our improvement efforts and we're not out of the pool yet, which is good because we get this supplemental money. This is another way of looking at it. In the past, you only got credit for either achieving proficient or moving them to, from the basic level into, I'm sorry, for moving kids from the basic level to proficient or moving the lowest 10 percent of your kids. I'm sorry, moving the lowest of your student, lowest performing students, 10 percent. I know that's confusing, but it's irrelevant at this point because that's gone. The new thing is to say, if you move kids from a low basic to basic, you get credit. From basic to proficient, you get credit. From proficient to goal, you get credit. So a school says, we didn't meet the goal level, but out of our 400 students, we move 300 over forward. Do we get any credit for that? We didn't forward a lot from a low basic to proficient. Now we get full credit for that. People are going to lose with that. This talks about, things we mentioned before, that School Performance Index, the state target is 88 percent. That, there's going to be a lot more conversation on that YED number and all that. But the key thing is by 2018, they want to be halfway there. At the bottom, you see the four-year graduation rate, 94 percent of kids graduating. And if you take more time, then they want to see 96 percent of kids graduating. This is the, that thing I just mentioned about, by the year 2018, if you look at the bottom line, bottom axis, this is 2018, just draw a vertical line up. Those schools that are in the blue, those are the lowest performing schools in the state. Those schools in the middle band are the middle of the Alliance districts. And those schools at the top, which we would name, are the highest of the Alliance districts. So the growth, for us to get to where we need to be by 2018, is much less than the growth that the lower performing schools have to achieve. So they have to work it out for me. We've talked to the board many times about acceleration. They have to get 12, 14, even 16 months worth of growth every 10 months to school unless they go with that time limit they put in. So that's going to be challenging for all of us. We fall into that bottom two category. You see the very bottom turnaround, that's the lack of better way, that's the worst category. Those are the schools that in essence will be considered, we actually can take it over. Some of them, one of them already has a special masterhood in place. The special master's authority supersedes the Board of Education. It's unbelievable. London has a special master, the former superintendent in Hartford. New London is slated to get a special master. And Bridgeport has a superintendent at an intra-basis who's lived out with Katrina and worked after Katrina to help the Mormons. So they're putting a lot of effort into the lowest performing districts. The review districts, sorry, focused districts are that middle road and then, sorry, miss the, I think the, one of those two districts, we're in one of those two, I don't recall whether they view a focus.
Not focused.
Okay. Review then is the middle. And then focus schools have a lot more autonomy.
We're on review.
We're on review.
Okay.
All right. Focus is in the middle of review. We're on review because of Danbury High School and ACE. And that really, it goes back to our conversation about the two, the more full they can. We need to do that for a holistic K-12 approach, but we really have to hammer hard at the six, 12 level. The reason for six, seven, eight is, you have to build capacity at the middle school in order to leverage the high school, or the kids are going to hit a whole wall. This goes into what we just talked about, and again, we'll be reviewing this over time. So this would be further than, you know, for a bit now. We want to do that through you.
I think just for the board's information, so you're knowledgeable, we were given like two days to just make a decision. And the way I looked at this, quite frankly, all of this work that they're asking us to do, we have been doing with board support and local support. So when the opportunity arrived for us to claim whether or not we want to participate in what they call the net, the Commissioner's network, which is really aligned with the lower performing schools, I told them that I would be willing to look at it if we were eligible. We are eligible, they call. Our schools, the high school and ACE are in that. So my approach is, I sent them an application saying, I don't, I'm not willing to participate in that, but I would like to do a study. And we think it's a good thing for Danbury, we would move ahead and do it. It does make it available for us to get more resources beyond 1.7. We've talked about bringing some help to ACE and some things that puts us in the category, doing some other things for high school. So we, we put that application in, we'll have to study it as we look at our improvement that's going forward. So we're, we're to the right and we are in a position to be considered. They don't, the people to the left automatically in, no option focus, you're going to go, review schools that we are, they'll choose. The Commissioner has up to 25 schools he can permit to be in there. And we could be partners in that if he decides they'll take us in. And we have a meeting with them next week, I believe, to go over what it is that we're doing already with their consideration. So if you read that, that's what that's about.
Let me just add one more thing. If you look down the top left, you see state schools. That's a school improvement grant. That's a mandatory participation assessment. The lowest 5 percent of Title I schools in the state. We are nowhere near that. The middle group, those are schools that have a four-year graduation of less than 60 percent. We're nowhere near that. To the right, if you remember, our number is 61.5. And you have to have a School Performance Index lower than 64. So we almost missed it, which means we won't be eligible for 1.7. So this is actually good news for us. And as Sal said, if you're in that turnaround school model left, you have to ramp up this summer. And this whole thing kicks in full force in September. No idea how the student systems are going to do it, but they have to. We've opted in either 2013, 14 year, or 14, 15. And as we've been doing with a number of initiatives, typically, Danbury at Walks Point, we're always in the front. In this case, it makes more sense to wait and let somebody go forward first and let work out the bugs and then we go. So we've said, we're interested, we're interested. Yes, question? We've talked about this already. The one thing that we decided that would be the right thing to do as a district and wanted to share with the board, is your thinking, we no longer have law for choice. But the law said that if Eileen chooses to leave Sal's school and come to Bill's school as a kindergartner, she could stay in Bill's school until she graduates in fifth grade and moves on. We don't want to rip the family out after they've been in the school for three or four years. So we've said, we're going to allow kids to stay, providing trans- Providing transportation choice is not required, but the commissioner strongly encouraged us to do the right thing. And we've talked as a team and this is a modest expense, just the right thing to do for me and my school. Great, and that would be effective thinking. The same thing, we talked about Title I schools, it gives a little bit more flexibility, but not a whole lot. This was pulled off the top of our Title I, we had a reserve ten percent for PD. It's no longer required, but we did allow, it did allow us to provide some professional development in non-Titel I schools. And since our threshold was cut on thirty thousand out of thirty-four at our suggestion, this gave us some much needed funds to do PD. So that's still an option for us. This is just a bunch of other to go, or what it says in a nutshell, I'm not sure who wrote this. You can take some of your other grant money and comb it a little bit into Title I. And that's all it says. Title II funds used under another category, Title II for our PD, Eisenhower wanted to use to do math, science and technology. We basically hired staff with that. You can take and comb a little bit into Title I. It's just, it doesn't make sense. We're doing the right thing with our grant money, we're very, very accountable for that. This part, we don't have a problem with highly qualified was not waived. It was recommended in a waiver. The reason we don't have a problem with this will suggest that we want to have people who are not highly qualified in front of kids. So our folks are all highly qualified unless they're on a DSA, a shortish area and they're working toward becoming highly qualified. So we feel comfortable with that. And that's it. So will we? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to mention, one of the things embedded in the waiver was to look at student growth over time or value added system. The application had that embedded in the waiver, but Washington denied that part of it. So it's still based on change of scores, not program instituted or same kids over time. Connecticut is trying to apply for an appeal on that. We think we have the commissioner convinced that for Connecticut, seeing that these mission judgments for the one point seven and for improvement with our own, to use the value added system, the growth model. And then utilize that to present it to the Fed saying, this may be a better model to make a judgment. But the big thing we're all hoping for is that, you know, we would get credit for time. It didn't happen. They did not approve that. That's why it took Connecticut longer than they thought. They kept fighting that issue and they promised that, you know, be a culture of quality gap. So that's still part of the goal.
Okay. This one?
Um, yeah, I guess I'm a little bit confused because I believe you said, brushing Dr. Glass, that some districts were, were getting into this right away and you did not review it, so we're holding off a little bit. Now if we're holding off, we still get the money? This is where I'm at.
And I apologize for what was said. The district, there are some districts who are not saying, well, let's just jump right in on this. Those districts are being told, you must do this. The districts, it's hard, I don't think it's appropriate to read it off the list, I'll be happy to give you this on television, but the districts in bold print are being told, you have to do this and you have to do it now. Extremely aggressive, we'll give you money, but you're going to have to spend a whole summer ramping up, starting September one, you have a full tilt on this. What we're saying is, we're still eligible for the money and we're still going to be very aggressive in applying for it. Matter of fact, more aggressive probably than most. But, and we do have to start in, in August or September. We don't have to have all those punitive, you know, bachelor's awards, those overly prescriptive requirements don't apply to us. And so the piece where I said we're going to hold off is really, there's another, I believe it's about a million dollars, that we're interested in opting into, we have a high school and an ACE. And that's a separate, we send up a request to say, we're interested in this, we want to hold off one year.
That's beyond the one point seven, okay. That's the difference.
Right. Could be two point seven million coming together.
Okay, now my, my next question.
And those are the butter sandwiches.
Okay. I still don't understand. I think Dr. Sal maybe answered this, but I didn't understand it. What was that called? Testing. With no child luck behind, all I heard for years was, oh, it was horrible because it caused teachers to teach to the test, you know, not really. How is this changing that? We're being graded, how are we showing our improvement?
It's a complex answer. Let me take it from my teacher's perspective. I really don't think I can name more than, I can name the teachers on one hand and have favorites left over from teachers who say, we don't want to be highly accountable. They don't, teaching is one of the most accountable areas that there is. Testing was never an issue and teachers have been testing forever. Their concern was, I'm being driven to narrow my curriculum to teach to a test that doesn't make sense to me because you're saying, you're at this level, now make sure you can get that level. We aren't going to get to this level. And so the rich math curriculum that we have was narrowed down to twenty-five strands that were measured on the CMT and will teach, we never did this. There were differences. You will teach only those twenty-five strands. Kids actually got a very poor math education. And if you look at the PISA study and similar studies, which are studies that, they're international studies that compare economically developed countries, how's the United States going? We've been dropping, we're down to number twenty-two last time they did a study in math and science because of this very strange way of thinking about, we're going to improve. Goals two thousand, year two thousand, we'll be first in the world in math and science. We're now dropped down to twenty-second. So that's what teachers are really against, so administrators. This new piece says, you get credit if you remember from below basic to basic, basic to proficient, proficient to gold. So if you move kids forward, we recognize that, that you're, they're learning and they're growing and that's good for us. And so teachers aren't having a problem with that. They don't also, they also don't mind teaching to the test if they've said, let us craft the curriculum up against the state national standards. This is the body of knowledge for our kids to master and we're going to test them on it. So shirt will test, teach to the test, test in what we want them to learn. It was that other distortion of that that really set people off, myself and Sal.
So is this why I see differences in the, on May twenty-third, you handed out the draft for the conditional funding under Governor's Budget?
That's the matrix, yes.
It was handed out May twenty-third, but it was drafted, I guess, on May eleventh. And now I'm looking at the new one and I'm noticing that it was a revised draft dated June fifth.
There's a new one, Ann Rose, that's dated June eleventh, I think.
Okay.
We've done that too.
Is that, do I have that as, is it, where is that?
We will need to get that to you.
Because I see some significant changes and I wanted to know if I could talk about this.
This is right here. And this one, oh, I'm sorry, I said June fifth.
Yeah, that's the one that was, that I have on my.
That's, that's the newest version. And if you look on the far right, see where it says cost one hundred sixteen, three hundred fifty, you'll see a little asterisk under some of them right here. That means that's included in the, that's included in the one point seven, meaning that's an item, like that's all they care, that's not even what we're going after. But if we're able to be aggressive and other districts don't want to go through the hoops and hurdles and there's extra money left over, which happens frequently at the state, they'll say, here, it's going to go to the eleven board members. And three of the board members say, no, we're not interested because it's just too much work. They redistribute that to the remaining board members. So we're hoping that they'll be willing to redistribute some of this funding since it's already been approved by the legislature. So we've gone beyond the one point seven million, hoping for maybe two point two.
With non-asterisks.
With the non-asterisks, yes.
So that's why, I'm just looking at some of the differences. One of the things I've noticed from the original May draft, that is not on the June one, is the bilingual assessor.
Yes.
And I'm assuming you've made these changes becau, and this is assumption, you made these changes because you needed to see more than, than closing the gap with the middle school and high school. Because it looks as if you put in two counselors or deans of high school for at risk, which is not on the original May. This PD teacher enhancement is on the new one, but not on the May. And I wanted clarification on what that means. And the six math specialists on the new one, it was not on the May one.
Right.
Which I'm assuming based on this, you're saying to provide your school with a full-time math specialist. So you only need six so that there's at least one in every school?
Right.
Okay. And then I'm noticing on an old one, on the new one, Head Start was giving back their fifty thousand dollars that we took out of our general fund. And now on the new one, they're getting back the fifty thousand.
Let me see if I can get a couple of those. I think the big ones, the six math specialists, we met with our principals. They felt very comfortable with our elementary language arts program. Because we, the model that we adopted, this Dallas literacy model, is now apparently the model of status for the drive department. Again, come, of course, the indicators are reflective in that. So we're in great shape. We have to do a little bit of poetry, a little bit, everything else. Elementary math is going to be much more challenging because they're now looking for multiple ways of a student demonstrating their knowledge. So give us one option, now give us another, now give us another. It's going to be hard for our teachers to come around. With the full-time math specialists that we're building, according to our principals, they felt that was a great use of the money. The, the other one you mentioned, I want to tie it to, those, the.
Teacher.
The PD teacher enhancement to provide content-specific coaches for teachers in English reading, math, science, social studies. This in essence replaces the ELL kids assessor. The feeling originally was, we're not getting enough diagnostic data from kids coming in, say, from the room. They've had interrupted schooling, they may be ninth graders chronologically and only gone through fourth grade. We need to do a deeper level of diagnosis. It shifted after we talked to everybody that we could do a much better job. We're never going to get that deep a diagnosis, kids have a fourth grade education. It'd be much better for us to have coaches that will work with teachers who have expertise and say, I can help you with a kid with this degree of interrupted schooling. So that goes back to that talent management piece, developing our teachers. How, how do we teach a kid who says a fourth grade education and he is now entering my school as a ninth grader? That's a huge issue.
So they're only coaches with the, so they're only there to actually provide some kind of consultation with the teacher or will they actually help?
They will be job advantage, professional developers who are actually like a math specialist, they're even highs from work. But, you know, and you could come in and I could say, Ann Rose, I don't know how to do this. And you could say, watch me teach. And cheer with me, then I'll watch you teach and give you feedback. And then while you're doing it, I'll move on to Ed because he's having a similar problem. And the only, the deans, the counselor deans, there's a, you heard Dan Donovan talking about the huge number of disciplinary throws in the high school. And today, we have all of our administrators and department heads over at Union City who's been for a four-hour session on teacher evaluation training. And the concern they have is there's not enough of us to go around and give you the evaluation above the raise in that morning. Because Bob was on the teacher scout committee. How do we free these people up to do more instructional leadership work? A dean would go in and work with students on the school, on student comportment, help to support and improve school climate. But we put in, not dean of discipline, which some districts have, because that's just, here's the infraction, you're out for three days. Rather, a counseling dean that will say, let's help get you on the right path, Bill. Now I don't want to throw you out, I want to get you on the right path. And while I'm doing this, my colleague, I lead the assistant principal, is in with the teachers, doing observations and things like that. So it's this very holistic kind of approach for talent development.
Thank you.
Welcome everyone.
I have one question.
Sure. It's my summer, huh?
AYP equals AM below. Okay. Who said this ago? You're talking, state has already said grade at eighty-eight percent of this, that and then, I thought of that again, Lynn, when you were doing individually, you used another measurement, Danbury, and I can't.
SBI.
It's the school.
Say it again.
SBI.
It's the performance index that says, as you, we're trying to get to eighty-eight percent in the aggregate. In two thousand eighteen, we're at fifty, the fifty percent mark. How do you figure out what that is? We're going to take the kids from below basic, they move to basic, you give them some credit, thirty-three percent. In case you take from basic to proficient, you give sixty-seven percent credit. In case you take from proficient to gold, advance one hundred percent credit.
So you may have different FBI figures.
You absolutely.
For different schools, for different.
Different classrooms, yes.
Okay. Got you. Thank you.
And it's, and we, and we're asking, that's what they wanted the waiver to happen? And they said, no. We've asked them to use that to make judgments about our school. And that's why we think it's a good idea. Because it gives, because of the, for example, DLO had moved out of it, then they're no longer given credit. But now, in the system, in the new system, they're giving credit, moving ahead, which is, you know, is all the work to teach and hard work that they've done, I appreciate.
Yeah, I just want to get, I see my good friend, Mr. Maloney in the back. Well, we're not going to ask you, it is on the. Originally, we were talking about cutting, I think, a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty-five thousand, something like that up at that start. And then I was under the impression that we had cut that cutback back to fifty thousand because we were going to use some of this one point seven million.
And Sal, what is that?
And now, if I'm understanding it correctly, we're also taking the fifty thousand, or negative fifty thousand?
We, we, over, over a period of a few years, we're looking at, matching, having, I think the number was two fifty of their ballots that we would, we would be able to reduce to budgets so that in fact, you know, about three years ago, the funding. And fifty thousand dollars, we promised we would put it beyond the one seven, beyond the one seven. So we get to the one seven and we get further funding, that's one of the things that they would improve. It's beyond.
It's one of the things without the asterisks.
That's, that's correct, that's correct. Now understand, one of, one of the things that they've been very inclined now to move on is that, one, the definites that they were fine, because Head Start, that's something they, they think is comparative and makes, makes a difference. So they made it in the state that if any of the districts put that into their funding, they would, they would include that. So that's a guarantee funding.
Sure. I just would like to know, do we have that presentation in our copy?
Did that, yes, we're going to, we'll get it to you and we're also going to put it on the website. We're going to get teachers to look at it, but we'll get you. All right, thank you. Joe, would you make sure?
If I just heard you correctly, you said that that was one of the guarantees, if you had Head Start in your proposal?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm just curious, if we, if we know that, if we know that they would absolutely approve this if you had Head Start in it, why couldn't we have moved the five hundred and eighty-five thousand that we have wanted our funding Head Start and put that in the one point seven? And then put some of these things that might be questionable, that we feel is necessary, back into our budget? Because to me, at this point, it's, you're going to, you're going to get the money, but if you could almost be guaranteed the money because Head Start is part of that proposal, why couldn't that be moved over? The whole five hundred and eighty-five thousand? And then these other pieces, like I said, that are questionable, I don't know if they're even questionable, you put back into our regular budget? So that when you know you're getting that one point seven?
Well, I'd rather.
You've got to stop.
That's correct, and that's something we talked about. I, I, I think, again, we're still studying the possibilities. It just seems this way to me, that the money that's coming into one seven, the only motivation I have to not do it the way you're talking about, that I can't tug myself onto that side, is that it comes in categorical, which means it comes into the category of improvement and it comes directly to the Board of Ed. That money cannot be manipulated. So it's guaranteed. My concern is that if I were to move, let's say, each funds on the other side, now those funds for the things that we think are important are going to be competing for other operational funds. I can't guarantee it. So if we put in a kindergarten, for example, in here, and next year, we, they'll get upgrades from, from the city, we get that's money. I, you know, I don't know how I was going to be able to handle that kindergarten. Does that now mean I have to reapply and move these things into the other side because the money is not guaranteed? Once the board approves it on conditional funding, then you can say, if it's approved, provide yours. You're going to get that money. We can't guarantee it on that. That's the only thing. We can't guarantee it on that. That's the only thing. Because we thought about that, wouldn't it make sense there? Because now it opens up that whole thing. That was sort of, it's almost a no-go here. And then we kept thinking and thinking, well, maybe that isn't the right thing to do, because we have a commitment, Jim, on this side. We know how the funding is going, and we want it, we need these things to close the gaps. So let's guarantee to the teachers and to administrators, we can deliver this no matter what happens on the operational side of the budget. That's the only reason. And then the commissioner's saying, well, then you can make adjustments, and we don't know what that means. So that's why we stayed that way, because the only way I could, that was the thinking behind it. See, I had no objections to that, Jim, it's, it's okay.
If I could just address that in a slightly different perspective.
Jim, you gotta use the mic.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Slightly different perspective. Head Start is specified in the legislation, because the legislature and the Department of Education recognizes the importance of Head Start as a building block to the whole program of reducing the disparities. Okay, so it's specifically called out in the legislation. I think the superintendent in the proposal he's making has struck the right note. Because if you go back, there's a counterconsideration, which is that Danbury is already invested in Head Start, has been for 40 years, right? The legislation requires that a substantial majority of the money be used for new initiatives. So if the city, if the Board said, okay, we'll move all 585,000, it's nice from the Head Start perspective, but the commissioner could very well say, wait a minute, you just violated the whole spirit of what we were trying to do. So I would say that the superintendent has struck the right, the right note in that regard. Thanks. Thank you.
The key to all this, then, is they have to be supplemental programs. You can't be switching something that already is.
Well, recall, thanks, James, for doing that, that they keep saying net new, net new. And as Jim points out, that if it's something that you have, you're building on, okay, like kindergarten. You have one at each. We had evidence that we were gonna move on, we couldn't do it, but now we're doing. So I think that they look favorably at that, so that's correct.
Yes, I just follow through, okay, so this is submitted to the state?
No, I'm sorry, we have not submitted. Well, we submitted to the state, just sort of, we submitted a draft that you're seeing just for advice.
Okay.
Just for advice, because you're gonna have to approve it before you...
And then the final draft has been, what, submitted, or?
Well, we're hoping that at the next board meeting, we can get things done to you, so that we can do the early submission of July 13th. Because the whole idea of trying to get those people, and then settle up, that's why. So rather than wait till August, so that's my hope, that's what we're hoping to do. Or we have a special board meeting before, so either or.
Yes. No, Dr. Glass, I'm sorry. When you were talking about the, of Danbury, seeing, what was it, 61? It was called...
61.5, I believe, sorry.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, I can't see you. I'm sorry, the 61.5. I can't, I just lost the paper that I have right on. And that, is that anywhere communicated to parents that we're, we're doing? The impression that I get from people is that we're not doing a good job. And this clearly shows me that we are. Where can we put that to show that, that we are doing a good job? Where can we, like, boost?
My history, Danbury's, we've always, we've always had a hard time telling our story. We just have not been able to get it out there in the best possible way. If folks had come, the community had come to hear the Lighthouse presentation. Again, an independent psychometrician, person who does all this kind of measurement stuff, basically raved about what has gone on in Danbury. And I think that the weakness on our part sometimes is that it's difficult for us to turn around and say, look how great we are. Because it's us saying, you know, we're the ones who are saying that. So I think doing things like Saddle's Newsletter, Saddle TV, as we call it. On my website, I have the Teaching and Learning Center, TLC, having parents start to send more and more questions. By getting CODA, you know, it was an amazing event. We talk about a 360, it's not just reading, writing, and math, but it's a whole education, the arts. We have the robotic competition winners. One of our students makes so far in spelling bee. I think it's just a battery of blasts, media blasts constantly going out. And lastly, I mean, for a district our size, we're so lean, there are districts that have pretty much full-time media consultants that are working just to get their message out, yeah? So I think it's just that it's like pushing against the tide, we don't have to be relentless with it, and just keep saying, look what we get.
Did Janelle ask for something, and hopefully before you go, we'll have it. We're working on a little card, pockets of excellence, just so I can give to you, and you can walk around. You know, I have some of these accomplishments, kind of a bragging, you know, showing grandkids, kind of thing. Showing my kid Danbury. So we're working on that, just so that we have, and we're gonna make about 1,000 of them. So we're getting off the folks. But it's telling the story and getting out there, I know. Because there are some amazing things that our teachers are doing, and we just need to celebrate that.
And with technology, it should be even easier, since they can go onto a website and just click to see those pockets of excellence. I don't know, they can be linked somehow, or if there can be some kind of running record of things. But we need to use that technology for our benefit.
Shuan, Shuan, as we could find, because we've been, Shuan has been working on that.
To address your question, as a member of the Community Engagement Committee, we have started that process. And one of the first steps was to meet with the citywide PTO. And we did present that to the parents, asking them to come back with us and share with us what are some of the successes within Danbury, and how can we better communicate that to the community, and give us suggestions, as well as what do you see as the top five challenges? So several of the schools, the parents have replied with that information from their schools, in which I'll be working with Mr. Janelle, the chair, and several other people, synthesizing that information this summer, hoping to develop a plan to begin in September with realistic things that we can do, at least two or three for starters. Enhancing the newsletter, maybe a student of the month, different things that we can highlight with teachers, and what the great things are that our students and teachers are doing within the district.
All right, I'm going to roll the stage, it's gotten going, and it's with...
We're gonna move on down here, Jeff. Any comments you have?
We did have a sites and facilities committee meeting on Tuesday, June 5th. And did we give those?
Yeah, it is.
So all the information is there.
Graduation is the 19th, number two, Danbury High School. They have reserved parking for you up until 4:30. You come in at the Baker Street, and they'll tell you where to park. Up until 4:30, okay? And then we will assemble in the auditorium, or however, because they start marching on on time. So we can be there on time, and so we can be at, they use, it starts at 5:00. So we'll be marching on, on 5:00.
Did everybody turn in their names that we have here?
They don't have to, if you, if you're coming, we don't have to call.
Oh, okay.
Only if you not playing to attend.
Gotcha. And I hope the weather looks good.
It looks good, it's like 90 degrees.
That's good. We do have shade.
90, 90 degrees, yes.
Have shade.
Nice. Okay, I need a motion to go into executive, I'm sorry.
I was just going to volunteer to do the community relations.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Because Dick is an Eric.
Okay.
As Dr. Sal mentioned briefly, the Northern Fairfield County Association of Wilkers has a quarterly meeting. And the next one coming up is on the 21st. And it happens to be one where they give out the Robert Morey scholarships to people from all the various high schools. And Dr. Sal is going to come and do a little talk there on education in general, and get a couple of plugs in for you.
What day is it?
It's the 21st.
Any other reports, I'm sorry. Being none, I need a motion to go into executive session, and we're gonna take a five-minute break. And we need everyone back here at 9:10. Okay?